Scott Mason has been an associate editor with Heron's Nest for over the last 10 years. He's the author of The Wonder Code, which received the top book award from both Haiku Foundation and Haiku Society America, and a starred review from the Curbus Review and Book List. Scott's own haiku won numerous awards, and he currently serves as a judge for the Haiku Foundation Distinguished Books Award and the annual Art of Haiku Contest sponsored by the Ito in North America. This month and last, Scott has been teaching a full subscribed course on haiku for writing, for the writing institute at Sarah Lawrence College. And a personal note, I met Scott the first time at one of the HNA's, maybe 10 years ago, six years ago. And he's personable and warm and a great speaker, and I'm sure it's gonna be a great talk today. Thank you, Scott, for coming and being here with us.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Bruce. And it's, it's a thrill to be here. Actually, this is my first appearance at, before the Haiku poets of North, Northern California. I've been, I've been trying to make hints like I'd be available for the two moons, but it hasn't worked so far. But anyway, I'm really pleased to chat with you about what I've come to think of as the Haiku Gratitude Project. It has several pieces. The most, the most visible manifestation is this book, which is called, what's it called? Gratitude in the Time of COVID-19: The Haiku Hackhamron. Or alternatively, the Haiku Hackhamron: Gratitude in the Time of COVID-19, depending on who you ask. But it's, it's a hardcover, around 240 pages. It, it features the work of 100 haiku poets from around the world, over 30 countries. And, and their work comes in four flavors, either basic haiku or haiku sequences, haibun or haiga. And, and so there's a lot of variety and I, and I think some fabulous work. I was thrilled with, with what we received. And the organizing conceit is this strange word, hackhamron, which, if you, if you're not familiar with the book, will, will be a head scratcher. It's, it's derived from, in the mid 14th century, Italian author Boccaccio wrote a book called The Deckhammeron. And it was, it's a work of fiction, but ostensibly was stories written by 10 young women and men who had basically escaped from a plague that was then ravaging Florence. And in their time together, they told each other stories. And, and the name of this book, Deckhammeron, is derived from 10 days, which was the number of days that they were telling each other stories. And so I just extrapolated that to, out to 100 to make Hackhammeron, so that we could accommodate 100 storytellers in the forms that we love. And, and also to, and it's also organized in 100 days rather than normal pages. Every two pages represent one day, with the exception of the first day and the 100th day. So, so that, that's more or less the, that's the broad strokes of the book. But these, what I'm calling the Haiku Gratitude Project also involved an entire process. And one which I found both revealing and uplifting. I thought it spoke volumes about this community, this worldwide community of which we're part. And also spoke, I think, quite movingly to the, not only the nature, but the power of haiku. So what I'd like to do in the brief time that we have together is to discuss a little bit of that process, so you know what went into the book. Then I'd like to share some selections from the book. And once I've done that, I'll come back and I'd like to report to you on some more recent developments in this, again, what I'm calling Haiku Gratitude Project. And then finally, I'll open it up to, or try to respond to any questions or, or comments that you might have. And so just in terms of the process that led to the book, I had two principal motivations. The first one was a longstanding belief that I have that haiku and its related forms are not only literary, but, and I think almost as importantly, I, I view them as therapeutic. And, and this, this may connect with some of your own, in fact, I expect a lot of your own experiences. And I, and, and that's the critical word. If I were to, if I were to suggest what it is about haiku that makes it therapeutic, it boils down to the word connection. And if you think about it, you know, haiku, and this applies equally well for the haiku-related forms that comprise the book. You think about it, connection is, it's, it's in the DNA of the form. I mean, haiku is comprised of two forms, and the, and the reader's role is to somehow reconcile those, those pieces in a way that is personally meaningful. Same thing applies with the other forms and, and so on. And so in a sense, if you do this enough, you've developed a practice. And it's a holistic practice. You've conditioned yourself to putting things together. This, this almost sounds trivial, but it isn't in our society because so much of our, of our orientation in the West is based on analysis rather than synthesis. It's, it's based on, you know, kind of breaking things apart and examining them and seeing what makes them tick. There are, you know, there are wonderful uses for both approaches, but it's a question of balance. And I think that the synthesis is something sorely deficient in our particular society. And when you put something together, it, by definition, it's a holistic practice, but holistic also translates to healing. So this gets you back to the therapeutic aspect. And, you know, and, and the, of course, the haiku not only connects with itself, but it enables both the writer and the reader to connect with the world around them. I mean, it's, this is all about connection. And then when you share, you're connecting with, with people that, that can appreciate the same sorts of things. I, at the end of my other book, there was a quotation that I think relates to this. It was from the poet Billy Collins. And he stated in an interview years ago, "A very deep strain of existential gratitude runs through a lot of poetry. It's certainly in haiku. Almost every haiku says the same thing. It's amazing to be alive here." So that was one motivation, this longstanding belief that I had that haiku is, is, it's, it's therapeutic and it, and it helps us connect. And it, and in doing so, it really taps into a sense of gratitude about the things we've, and people we've connected with. The other is that, yeah, this is more time-based. You know, we all remember at the beginning of this year, and, and this still applies to a large, sadly, to a large extent. The emotional climate was incredibly bleak. And, and I felt at the time really out of balance. You know, we had just received this gift of the coronavirus and, and, and it was terrible. I mean, it's a serious problem and disease and scary. And, and it was important for us to have important, to have useful news and, and to learn about it so that we could, you know, we could act in an appropriate fashion. Unfortunately, I think a lot of us found ourselves inundated with this steady drumbeat of, you know, the numbers of cases, and we're still experiencing this to a large degree. And not to minimize the seriousness of any of that, but it, again, a matter of balance. It just, I felt as though there was a lot of damage being done, obviously by the condition itself, but also about the way it became almost monopolistic and its, 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 its hold on everyone's attention. So these two things together, I thought, maybe in some small way, you know, the benefits that we get all the time from haiku and the practice of haiku, maybe somehow that can, can offer something useful in this, in this environment. There were, in, you know, so I saw this funneling into a book. And, and there were a few decisions to make, almost consider them strategic decisions. What's the theme of the book? Well, I, you know, that pretty much took care of itself based on what I just mentioned. I thought that it should be not only things that were maybe, maybe, maybe not directly triggered by the pandemic, but, but somehow tapped into gratitude. And I left that up to people who cared to submit work, you know, what that meant. I thought momentarily, probably for about 15 seconds, whether it should be a haiku-only collection. And it occurred to me that it made sense to open up the aperture a little bit and include haiku-related forms. Because I didn't want to deprive people who mainly write in those forms to contribute to this. And I, and, and it was important to hear as many possible haiku or haiku-related voices as possible. The, likewise, what would be the geographic focus of this thing? I suppose in a lot of ways, it would be easier if it was just United States or North America. But this was a pandemic after all. People all over the globe were experiencing this in different ways, but, but it was still a global phenomenon. And we have, I guess, through technology, a genuine advantage that we can still communicate with one another. So the internet certainly opened up the possibility of communication. In terms of what would be the limit, I chose 100. You know, at the same time, I was sort of thinking about the, the Decammeron, all that I mentioned earlier. And, and, and I think that I, I landed on 100 is pretty arbitrary, but the number of people who would be featured in the book. But I guess for two reasons. One is that I wanted to create a sense that, you know, get a little bit of sense of competitiveness involved, you know, so that people would be inclined to send the best work they could. But, but probably more importantly, to impose some discipline on myself. You know, what, you know, because where otherwise might I draw the line? And then the last thing was, okay, when would work be due? By the time I, I started contacting people was late March. And I decided on a really short deadline. And that was April 17th, with, which happens to be, I guess, International Haiku Poetry Day. And, but, but I wanted to make it, you know, I think a lot of people were not occupied with what they normally would have been at that time anyway. So, so there was an opportunity for, to strike while, while the iron was hot, so to speak. But I also wanted to, to give myself enough time to produce something so that it could get back out there while it was still topical. Sadly, that's, that's not a worry. So in terms of getting the word out, I, I ended up, you know, sending emails to several dozen people. I asked them to let others know if they might be interested. The, the Haiku Foundation was, was good enough to post one day, you know, the solicitation of entries. And, and Haiku New Zealand through Sandra Simpson was good enough to get out the word as well. And, and the, and what I requested was that if anyone was interested in submitting work, three pieces, whether a single haiku, a haiku sequence, a haibun, or a haiga, in any combination. So before I share with you some work from the book, and, and it's actually getting dark here now. So hopefully this will, sorry about the, the response in a word appropriate, given the, the, the theme here, was gratifying. I mean, I, I didn't quite know what to expect and, you know, it was a little bit of a personal risk because I felt, you know, what if nobody responds? It'd be sort of embarrassing. But it turns out that almost 400 people sent work, and these were poets from over 50 nations. So word had gotten out and it seemed to tap into something. My next challenge, of course, was, okay, what do I tell the 300 people that wouldn't be included? And, and, and obviously, based on those numbers, there, there, there were people that I, I, I had to say, you know, thank you very much and, and, but in, but what's interesting is that, and there was some wonderful work in there, and work by names you would know, a lot of names you would know, and people whose work you, I know that you respect. And what, when I said gratifying, it wasn't just because of the response initially, but when I contacted those people, I was quite moved because almost universally, people said to me, you know, no worries. I was just really happy for the opportunity to focus on something positive, you know, in, in, in this period. So, you know, they were very much a part of the project and I was, I was very much grateful to them. So enough of the prelude. I like to share work with you. The, I, I won't be sharing the haiga just because of format reasons, but there are some wonderful, I know, I noticed that Ron is here. He, he offered some marvelous pieces. And there, there are seven others in the middle of the book. They're in color. I, I think it, I was very pleased at how it came out. It looks gorgeous. But what I'm going to be sharing here principally is haibun, as well as one sequence and, and a few solo haiku. And if, if I did, if, if, if I imposed some sort of an order on here, apart from the 100-day thing that I mentioned earlier, I wanted to create a little bit of a sense of arc in, in terms of things that were almost more COVID-specific to things that were more generalized in terms of gratitude. And so you may sense that because what I'm going to be reading to you is going to be mostly in order that appears in the book. The first one will be a haibun by Jackie Pierce from Canada, and it's called Adaptation. "When I set out on the walk, depression and anxiety are a low buzz in the back of my mind. The pandemic has just been declared, and each day the news worsens. I feel off balance and wonder when I will see my friends and extended family again. I walk past the silent houses of my neighbors, their yards empty except for a few robins and chickadees. When I reach the park, the trees welcome me in. Tiny blue flowers bloom in a scatter at the foot of tall cedars and firs. Sunlight and shadows mingle. Branches rustle softly and the city sounds disappear. I breathe in the sweet new green of leaf buds. Breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. Social distancing. We share the owl's call through our cell phones." The, the second piece I'd like to share is a, is a haiku sequence. It's a titled sequence. And its author actually is in the audience here. It's Michelle Ruth Bernstein. And it's titled Sheltering in Place. So it's five haiku, series of five haiku, Sheltering in Place. Sheltering in place, the indoor flowers drop of nectar. In the snow, but not of it, white violets. Not asking for much for cythia. April showers, yarrow pokes through the plant litter. Maple buds waiting to leaf out where we left off. The next piece is a, is another haibun. This, this from Christopher Harold. And the title is With a Nod to Issa. With a nod to Issa. Shopping done, the car is gas tank full, I park. Carry three heavy grocery bags up 16 steps to the front door. Fumble for the right key, unlock the door, step inside, place the bags on the floor. Use a spray bottle of alcohol to sanitize the door's handles, both inside and out. Shopping bag handles to remove the protective face mask I'm required to wear. Peel off a pair of rubber gloves. Washing hands again, the fly on the bathroom mirror. And another, this one is from Jonathan Humphrey, Tennessee. And the title of this is Words in Praise of Kentucky Soil. Only now with the virus spreading do I think of my mother and her garden. The border to the north is closed. I will not see her for some time. She will be placing things in the earth and digging things from it. Her back will be sore and her hands heavy as she parts leaves, stalks her own hair. She will pause for the dragonfly that pauses for her. They will hover there together, and the world will be rided when they land. Late blossoms, another chance at gratitude. I want to share with you a, a couple of individual haiku that I thought spoke wonderfully well to the spirit of gratitude. They don't mention the word, but I think they, they walk the walk in a, in a haiku sense. The first one is by Nicholas Klosansky, Washington State. Rain starts. Each stone I step on, placed by a stranger. And this by one of our attendees, Brad Bennett from Massachusetts. What's left at low tide? Another haibun, this by Jim Kasian. It's titled Isolation Shame. Mental health experts worldwide report a sudden increase in these pandemical times of instances of isolation shame. This term, as with so much else in the post-truth era, suggests the opposite of its affect and should not be confused with remorse, remorse at the prospect of being socially or physically isolated, nor with the shame of people suffering privation, inadequacy, angst, or self-doubt. Rather, isolation shame is guilt at feeling, at being emancipated by one's isolation. Sufferers present as more relaxed, less harried, and are sleeping better and longer, possessed of happier dispositions and harboring more positive feelings about their general prospects. It is apparent how much shame such feelings can create, especially to those sensitive to others who are more extroverted and therefore less fortunate. Ensuing feelings of unworthiness and giddiness are common side effects. The syndrome appears to be primarily restricted to the arts world, with an especially high incidence in the haiku community. There is no known treatment at this time. However, researchers are studying the political realm and the plutocracy, members of which evince no indications of suffering from shame of any sort, in hopes that what is to be learned there might help sufferers to cope. Home alone, lengthening out in the bath. And here's a, a haibun as well from Roberta Beery, now from County Mayo in Ireland. And it's called The Voyage. We walk in circles, straight lines, diagonals. We walk by coves, mountains, hillsides. We walk in mist, fog, sunlight. We walk alone, in pairs, arms swinging. We walk to post offices, grocery stores, pharmacies. We walk on cobblestones, pavement, pebbles. Wherever we walk, birds are voyaging with us. We open ears, eyes, and heart to tuneful voices telling us to keep on keeping on. Crossing to safety on the high wire, blackbird song. I should make a sidebar note that if, if you, if you like birds, you'll love the gratitude in, in the time of COVID-19 because there are a lot of birds in it. And, and I speculate that that's because in a time of containment, of restriction, there's something compelling in these creatures that appear to be anything but. As I mentioned, when we get further on in the book, the explicit references to the current pandemic recede a bit, but there are other expressions of gratitude that come to the fore. And this haibun is by an Indian poet, Rashmi Basah. And it's titled Count Your Blessings. The narrow, lightless by lane is dense with leftover life. Everywhere there is grime and debris. Swarms of flies ambush a bulb glowing on a group of wrinkled people clustered around a black slate. As I turn the corner, students of my adult literacy class break into toothless smiles. An old woman, cast away from her son's home for being needy and illiterate, shouts, "I learned to write my name." She carves out the letters to a resounding applause from her classmates. Her hug is priceless. Summer clouds, my lunch tray full of parakeet chirps. One of the, one of the pleasures I had in compiling this was to discover or in sometimes, sometimes cobble together these serendipitous adjacencies between poems that came from people from entirely different places with entirely different mindsets or, or subjects. And, and I'd like to read four individual haiku in sequence right now by different poets. They're by Jute Schroed, the first one, from Washington State, Francine Banworth from Iowa, Dan Tuerin from Wisconsin. Dan Tuerin from Wisconsin, and Glenn Coats from North Carolina. And this is day eighty-three of the Haiku Cameron. Candleing eggs, the warmth underneath a broody hen. Sonogram. The floating fetus. Yawns. Softly kissing every conceivable place. Slow falling snow. Snow melt. From shoulder to shoulder, the baby's warmth. And this will be our next to last haibun. It's from an Australian poet, Marissa Fazio. And it's titled Opera and Wine. Barefoot and singing, Nono teaches me to make wine. The duna winter has let the vines sleep, and the long-legged summer has ripened the fruit fat. I've taken off my boots and washed my feet. With his beard, Nono points to a smaller hill of grapes on his left. In his opera, he has reached where the maiden sees her lover appear from afar as a pip. We begin to pogo slow, then grow into two gold-rimmed glasses that clink with harass into the horizon. Saluting you, I sip moonlight in my wine. And on the opposite page of day eighty-three, I have this individual haiku by Edward Cody Huddleston. Mead Moon. I can't sing. But I will. Our next to last piece, but the last haibun in the collection is this one from Terry French. And it's titled Rebirth. Redwoods, moss-coated rocks, fiddlehead ferns. The pine needle path interrupted by protruding roots. Just a whiff of sea brine. Down a mud-slick desire path into a cove of sand and rocks. Black monoliths rise from the swell. Seagull claws muffled by the waves crescendo. Tentacles of bull kelp tangled in sargassum. Iridescent bubbles floating on spoon. And me. Arms stretched wide, alone in the sand, breathless. Shoes cast aside, toes digging deep enough to take root. Head thrown back, one deep primal note sung to the sky. Water breaking. Another chance at a first breath. I may have mentioned at the outset that every day of the Hek Cameron in this scheme is a two-page spread, the only exceptions being the first page, day one, and the last page, day one hundred. So I'd like to read both of them to you right now because they sort of bracket the collection. The first is by Deborah Colagi. Mountains shrouded with morning mist. Aloe blooms. And in fact, this collection is is bracketed appropriately enough for today by California poets. The second one is Michael McClintock. And his poem goes sailing west out to the island torn from mist. So what I'd I'd like to do is before opening this up, just share um, a couple of uh, of more recent developments with uh, this um, Haiku Gratitude Project. I'm I'm happy to say that the sales of the book have been good and um, I this was never intended as a for-profit venture. I I I I sort of did want to cover my own costs and 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 that's more or less happened, so um, it it's uh, it's been um, I've gotten many wonderful comments from from recipients, so that's been gratifying. But the the other thing that I'm particularly pleased about is that this project has taken on a little bit of an independent life and there are five now nonprofit organizations that um, are using the book as part of their own gratitude-themed fundraising initiatives. Either to um, try to encourage um, donations or as thank you gifts for people who have donated to to their um, to their organizations and and um, I'm really happy about that because, you know, a lot of people have been a lot of organizations, a lot of people have have had a hard time during this period and and so um, and and so that that was uh, that was very um, comforting for me and 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 uh, the organizations, two of them are nature preserves. One is the T-Town Lake Reservation, which is in Westchester County, not far from where I live. Second one is the Watershed Institute, which is a um, which is in New Jersey and and um, and actually, one of my co-editors at the Heron's Nest Jeff Hoagland is the education director there. One of the one of the organizations is an educationally oriented nonprofit. It's called Mainline School Night. It's a basically adult education until earlier this year, it was all in in person, in class. I've actually spoken about haiku at that uh, at that location. It's it's in the Philadelphia areas, you might have surmised from Mainline. And and they've been around for fifty or sixty years and of course, they're now all virtual. And so they're using books to support their cause. And then there are two literary um, organizations. One is called the Katona Poetry Series, and I'm on their executive committee, and that's an organization for that for also for over fifty years has been bringing world-class poets. So far, non-haiku poets, but to Katona, which is in Westchester County, New York, and and uh, to to do readings and and so. And and then the other one is the Haiku Foundation. And and so the book will be available for people who provide a certain contribution and so that's uh, I asked, I think I've donated maybe around between four hundred and five hundred, four hundred and fifty and five hundred books for those. So um, I'm I'm really, I'm really pleased about that because not only will it be helping deserving organizations where there's a plausible connection with haiku, but it's also going to get haiku in the hands of people, you know, outside of of our of our wonderful community and and so spread the joy. And and speaking of which, I do have a modest supply of books left. So if any of you that are listening to this are involved with a nonprofit organization where you think it might be helpful for that organization in their fundraising, you send me an email and and we can talk. And then uh, before I open this up, just a thirty, my background's in advertising, so I have to throw in a thirty-second commercial. And uh, if if you want to, if if you're interested for yourself or as a gift or gifts for friends to purchase the book, the only place you can get it is on my website. So it's thewondercode.com and then scroll to the bottom and that there the payment options are there and and um, if you uh, particularly if you're interested for gifts for people, if you're multiple purchases with any two you purchase, you get a third for free. So um, so long as they're so they're sent to the same place. So um, I'm going to ask Susan to open it back up and 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 thank you for, thank you for tuning in and thank heavens for Zoom and 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 I'm happy to um, take any comments or answer as best I can any questions.
Thank you so much, Scott. That's wonderful. So as far as unmuting, if each of you could just unmute when you need to, if you prefer to stay muted to avoid a lot of background noise, that's also great. But if you have anything to say, go ahead and feel free to unmute and ask your questions or make your comments.
Scott, I'll start off. How did it, I don't know if you feel like sharing, how did it get affected you personally? We've communicated a lot during the COVID nine months now, and I just wonder maybe if you would, to share reading all the work, putting it together, what it meant personally to you. I don't know if you feel comfortably asking a personal question, but.
Oh, no, no, I'm I'm happy. I I'm happy to just say, first of all, I I have to say that um, I'm 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 lucky because um, I mean, we've all been affected by this. But I've probably been less affected than most anyone I know. You know, I'm more or less retired, so the the work complications were off the table. I um, I have a little bit in common with that, what was described in Jim Kasian's piece. You know, I I love talking with a group like this and and friends that that have similar passions, but um, I I I tend to be kind of a misanthrope. And 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 so and so the social deprivation, you know, didn't affect me personally that much. You know, so many of the inconveniences that I personally experienced, it would sound churlish to 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 go into them. I do love to travel, and that was obviously curtailed. But as far more directly to, I think, the spirit of your question is the 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 book itself, I mean, this was just a, it buoyed me. I mean, when I I read the things that came in, again, you know, bear in mind that I had no idea what would be, you know, what would be heading my way and and um, you know, and and a lot about this whole situation is a bummer. You know, and 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 this was, this was, the hope was that this could help offset that. And, you know, and I have my haiku to keep me happy, but but I I I found that when I started reading things and and some of and some of them were were in in, I I thought were incredible. I mean, I hope you got a flavor for that in some of what I read and and um, many here wrote some fab fabulous things that are in the book that, you know, time just prevented me getting into. I ju- I just found it a total uplift, so in a way um, I think I I found myself wondering at the end whether, you know, in spite of my, what I consider my lucky circumstances, I I do kind of wonder inside if there wasn't something in me that embarked on this whole thing in an effort to bootstrap myself emotionally. So um, so that may very much have been at play. Thanks for the question.
Well, thanks, Scott. We really appreciate you taking the time to read from the book for us and tell us about how the project came about, the process that you went through. It's very, very fascinating.
Thank you, thank you. Um, if there were no, I thank you for for hosting this. I really appreciate everyone, you know, taking the time to hear about this and and uh, and I hope that the um, I hope that the project lives on in certain ways because I, as as you may have already surmised, I I really think that haiku and and its related forms are therapeutic and and really um, you know, I'd 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 love to have us, you know, spread the love. So again, thank you all very much.
I just wanted to say, one of the, one of the upsides of COVID is Zoom meetings, which can also be a downside after you've had five a week. But it allows us to have this kind of interaction with people that we don't see normally. And I really love it. I just think that that's a great thing. You see people from all over the country and get to invite people like you, you know, to come and address us, and that's just been, it's been great.
Well, thank you. I Bruce mentioned the the course that I'm currently teaching for Sarah Lawrence and the Writing Institute at Sarah Lawrence and um, the uh, the students in that course, which who I mentioned in the breakout, I think they they range from ages sixteen to eighties. They're located in four different time zones. I mean, so so some good things have happened and and, you know, I was mentioning in the breakout, the only thing I regret is that, you know, twelve months ago, I hadn't bought stock in Plexiglas or Zoom.
Yeah. I have one question. I'm wondering, it might be a little early to ask, but do you have any other projects that you are kind of mulling over at this point or?
Sleep.
Okay.
I I um, I'm I'm often thinking about things, but I I I think I'm in between uh, that the 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 class that I mentioned is my current, you know, my most recent project, and so uh, that's been a lot of fun and um, but also time-consuming, so uh, I I haven't looked too far beyond that. And 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 this, and quite candidly, um, I um, I wasn't sort of in the market for writing another book when this situation developed. I mean, I I, but it it just seemed as though it uh, it was something that needed to be out there and 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 as, you know, again, responding to Bruce's question, maybe, you know, it was something I didn't realize at the time that I needed for myself as well, so um, you know, it takes a lot to to pull together a book and and um, no complaint because of this whole thing was was gratifying from beginning to end, but um, you know, but it is time-consuming, so I I'm I'm hoping to take a breather.
Well, thank you for taking it on.
Thank you.
Sharing it.
Yeah, I sense that there's been a real uh, need for poetry in our lives that's been, you know, more pronounced in the pandemic. I notice it in myself, but I I sense it among other poets as well, you know, in submissions and things and that also, I think, is one of the silver linings in this time.
I again, I'm sure some people have seen the, even the the New York Times had a whole centerfold spread of poetry on Thanksgiving Day. And that was really gratifying to see that kind of attention paid to it. So yeah, there is a thirst for it.
Yeah, it's interesting because poetry isn't isn't at the center of our culture until it comes to big events. And then and then people look for it for things that they feel unable to express in in other ways. I mean, there's a a famous William Carlos Williams quote, something to the effect that, you know, um, poetry doesn't solve anything, but people perish for the lack of what it provides. And and I think that, and I I'm I'm sure I just mutilated that that quotation, but I think that there's real truth in that. I mean, there is, there is something here that's and um, I mean, uh, this is preaching to the choir because I think that we all in our own ways have found something vivifying about poetry and haiku in particular. I mean, that's the Billy Collins quote, I think nails it. I mean, it it's it's um, it's a celebration of of being alive here. It's a celebration of, of being alive here.
Scott. I was so grateful for your focus on gratitude. I thought it was unusual and very powerful and transformative to have us focus on that. It isn't just a positive attitude, but it's a gratitude in the receiving of good things amidst difficulty. So ever since that, I, I, it was highlighted in my mind and when I gather poets, I have, um. Meetings during the week, three meetings, and I was really amazed how people feel the need for them. There are poets in Japan that come every what, every meeting. And, uh, people that are isolated. Uh, need a community and so Zoom gives us that opportunity. But the concept of gratitude is really highlighted in that need for a community, uh, and especially a poetic community and the people that we love.
Well, thank, thank you for that, I mean, uh, obviously gratitude, you know, isn't original to me, there, there is a, um, there is a, um. Some of you may be familiar, there's sort of a new. Branch of psychology called positive psychology, it's, it's come to the fore in the, in the past twenty or thirty years. And, um, you know, the underlying premise is, you know, um, historically psych- psychology, uh, psychiatry has studied. Um, you know, the things that make people unhappy with the interest in alleviating their misery, but this new kind of, of psychology. Is kind of looking through the other end of the, of the tube and, and, uh, and trying to take, okay, people who are happy, what, what are the, what are the. Um, ingredients of happiness and, um. Um, there have been a number of academics, Marty Seligman and, and University of Pennsylvania and, uh, other places who have studied this extensively and, um. But gratitude often comes to the fore in those kinds of, of those, those kinds of studies and, um. Uh, and so gratitude practices become sort of like a thing. Um, I have to say that when, when I had a little bit of, I, I mentioned the motivations behind this at the outset. Um, I didn't mention the trepidations that I had, but one of them was that, you know, if I, if I kind of served up gratitude as a theme. I didn't want people to take it as this like Pollyanna-ish thing. You know, that, okay, with, you know, this thing that's happening isn't going on. You know, I, I, it's not something that I wanted to sweep under the rug because it's real and it's important and it's serious. Um, but it's not the only thing going on in our world. And, um, and I tried to implicitly acknowledge that because the book is dedicated to Stuart Quine. Who is a haiku poet, uh, was a haiku poet, uh, prominent one from, uh, England who passed away from. The COVID-19 virus, so, um. There was no, you know, and, and a lot of what I read and a lot of what appears, especially in the first part of the book. Um. Speaks to the situation explicitly. So, um, uh, I, I, you know, but that was a little bit of a trepidation I, I had going in, but I think, um, uh, most, you know, took it in the spirit that it was intended, you know, not to whitewash or, or. Or, uh, gloss over the situation, but, but to, to sort of like, um. Uh, um. You know, let the other side speak too. You know, a little bit of alternative programming to the non-stop and all-consuming and monopolistic attention on all the unfortunate things that were happening. So, thank you.
It's kind of like mining the situation and finding the, the gemstones.
Yeah, they're there, they're always there, I mean, and I think as haiku poets, we know that. You know, because we could, we're more attuned, you know, just, it, it just happens naturally. You know, uh, we're more attuned to noticing the small wonders all around us. And that is such a, um, a useful survival strategy in times like these.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you again.
Thanks, you Scott. Okay, so, um. We have just a few announcements and then we're done, or you can linger. So, um.